Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. We're going to read a proclamation on Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Me and Judge Gillum. She will in a minute. All right. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, men, and children of every age, background, and belief, with nearly one in four women and one in seven men in the United States have suffered severe physical violence from an intimate partner, whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month evolved from the Day of Unity held in October of 1981, conceived by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence with the intent to connect advocates across the nation who are working to end violence against women and their children, and whereas...
And whereas the Day of Unity soon became the entire week devoted to a range of activities conducted at the local, state, and national levels with the common theme of mourning those who have died because of domestic violence, celebrating those who have survived, and connecting those who worked to end violence, which further evolved into the first Domestic Violence Awareness Month, observed in October 1987 and annually since that time. And whereas during the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we reaffirm our dedication to forging a community where no one suffers the hurt and hardship that domestic violence causes, and we recommit to doing everything in our power to uphold the basic human rights to be free from violence and abuse. Now, therefore, we, James R. Knight Jr., Mayor of Hopkinsville, and Jerry Gillum, County Judge Executive for Christian County, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Month, Awareness Month, in Hopkinsville and Christian County, and we call upon all our citizens to support this efforts to heighten awareness and work to end all forms of domestic violence. This dated the 21st day of October 2025. If Ms. Lancaster from Sanctuary would come up, we'd be honored to present this proclamation to you all and the hard work and beautiful work that you all do.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Ma'am? Evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here this evening. I'd like to call this October 21st regular City Council meeting to order, and Ward 6 for the invocation.
All right. You all know I like to spotlight members of our community when it comes around to my turn. So, my wife and I have been attending Newark Fellowship for several months now, and with us tonight is Pastor Cliff Hines. Cliff has been the kids' and family pastor at Newark for over eight years. Cliff loves helping kids discover who they are in Christ and watching families grow in faith. At home, he and his wife Bethany stay busy and entertained by their son Clay. Whether teaching, planning big events, or just sharing life, Cliff is all about planting seeds of faith that last a lifetime. And I personally, I met Cliff several years ago, and he's just a really bright light for our community. Every time I see Cliff or hear him, it just brings a smile to my face. So, I want to welcome Cliff and community members that present to you, Mr. Cliff Hines.
Thank you, Travis.
Proverbs 3, 5, and 6 says this, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart; lean not on your own understanding; in all your ways submit to him, and he will make your paths straight." Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for today. God, we come before you today asking for your wisdom, for your guidance. God, thank you for the opportunity to gather together for the work of, for the opportunity to work together for the good of our community. Lord, I pray to you, grant our council members, grant all of us discernment as they make decisions, and that's going to affect so many lives within our community. God, I pray to you, give them clarity of thought. God, give them unity of purpose. God, I pray that their hearts seek what is right and just. God, we pray for peace, respect, for understanding among all those who's going to take part in this meeting today. God, I pray that every decision reflects your truth, reflects your love. God bless our community with safety, with growth, with compassion. God, help us all to be faithful stewards of what you have entrusted to us. God, I pray that you bless Hopkinsville and all the families that live within it, and that's in Jesus' name we pray, and we all said.
Amen. Would you please stand for the pledge? Thank you, sir.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Stallins.
Present.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Sumner.
Councilmember Meek.
Councilmember Bogard.
Present.
Councilmember Velez.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Drouw.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Words and recognitions, I'd like to first start out. We have mayor for the day, Mr. Garrett Clark. He come in, and we swore him in this morning. We had a lot of fun in all around City Hall, and then he went to the Police Department, Fire Department, and out to Public Works, and out to the Sportsplex. And he wanted to be here tonight, but he chose baseball over City Council, so I took my hat off to him for that. He'd rather be at Rough Park than being here with us tonight.
Good for him.
But we had a great time with Mr. Clark today here, City Hall on that. Now, we will move right on into the Police Department. Chief Newby, I'll meet you up front there, sir.
Good evening, everybody. We have a new officer that we want to swear in tonight. If I can get Officer Graham to come up front, please. Officer Graham was born and raised here in Hopkinsville, graduated from Hopkinsville High School in 2020. He started at HPD in 2021 as a public safety officer. He then attended the Public Safety Dispatch Academy in 2023, where he received the Academic Achievement Award. After serving about a year and a half as a dispatcher, he attended the Police Academy in Richmond, and he is now expecting a newborn any day now, named Cooper, correct? We're now honored to swear him in tonight as the newest officer with the Hopkinsville Police Department.
Thank you, chief. Raise your right hand, please, sir. I state your name.
I'm Officer Graham.
As a citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and of the United States of America, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform to the best of my ability to duty of police officer for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Kentucky, so help you God. Thank you. All righty. Hurt his wife come up with a penny there. Sticking really hard. Come on around here.
There you go. Shake them.
Good evening. We actually have several firefighters tonight before we'll do some promotions. So, if I could have Dalton Castile. We had a problem getting in tonight, so it's a packed house.
Good problem to have.
Need Dalton Castile, John DeArman, Sahib Farmer, Cameron Hayes, David Claus, Jordan Ladd, Jeff Medina, Justin Newby, Zachary Ohm, Jamison Scholler, Keith Stallins, and James Young. One line.
Just straight on. Wanted to get a bigger chambers. You want to come this way? All righty, gentlemen. Thank you all for being here. I want to get you to raise your right hand. I state your name. Citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, of the United States of America, do solemnly swear that will faithfully perform to the best of my ability the duties of firefighter and EMT for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and that will support, protect, and preserve life and property of the citizens of Hopkinsville, so help me God.
Please turn around. If we can have the family members come up for the penning, please.
Congratulations.
Push it in like a U.
Now, Bubba, this is going to be horrible.
If we could have, uh, Nathan Stewart come forward, we are promoting Nathan Stewart to the rank of lieutenant.
I will.
White on the little cap. I do, but.
Great, ma'am. Yeah. Alright, so we're, we're promoting Nate, uh, to the rank of, of lieutenant. Nate's been with us since October of 2019. Um, he, he's here, he's being pinned tonight by his wife Whitney, uh, and his son Turner. He is, uh, in our, uh, Fire Marshal's office. He's actually won a national award this year in that. Uh, mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, please. I state your name. As a citizen of Hopkinsville, of, excuse me, citizen of Commonwealth of Kentucky and the United States of America, do solemnly swear that will faithfully perform to the best of the ability, duty of lieutenant for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and will support, protect, and preserve life and property of the citizens of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, so help me God. Sir. Turner, you want to come pin your daddy?
I'm on up here.
Pin you, mayor, big man.
If we'll ask Mike Wilson to step forward. Mike started with the city in 1996 and transferred to the fire department in 1999. He actually started with me, we got hired together, so kind of mad at him. He promised me he'd stay as long as I did, but we'll talk about that later. Uh, so Mike did 29 years total with the city. It's a, it's a huge accomplishment. He's been an engineer for us, lots of accolades throughout his career. So I'd like to read his plaque here. Michael T. Wilson, engineer, firefighter, EMT, July 1999, October 2025. Presented to Michael T. Wilson in recognition of and appreciation for 26 years, two months of loyal, faithful service. Your dedication and devotion to the Hopkinsville Fire Department has contributed immeasurably in saving lives and protecting citizens. We are proud of your accomplishments throughout your career. On behalf of the citizens of Hopkinsville, we thank you, city of Hopkins.
Public comments. Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Appreciate that. Alrighty, now we'll move into item six, public comments. Please come up and state your name, address, and we have three minutes on the clock for you, for three minutes to come up and speak and go from there. Thank you.
Alvia Littleton, 209 Mandrian Drive, Oak Grove, Kentucky. So I'm here today to talk to the council. You say, well, why would someone from Oak Grove be talking to Hopkinsville Council? Because, um, Oak Grove is a nonpartisan voting for city council. So I understand Oak Grove's system. What I didn't understand was Hopkinsville's system because they wanted the ward. So I understood the wards, I understood the primary where the wards would choose what Democratic candidate, what Republican candidate would represent them. And then came the mud. The mud came in the general election. So I did not understand how in the general election, I thought only the ward people could vote for the ward people because those are the two candidates coming out of that, and the ward would choose who would represent them. What I didn't know was this citywide thing. So my speech starts with the citywide thing. I kept asking Hopkinsville residents that have been voting, what is this citywide? What is citywide? No one could explain to me what was citywide. So Bonnie and myself, we went to several different places to ask people what was citywide. What we finally found is that to provide, um, the transparency about this on the wards of Hopkinsville having represented, representation that they want and deserve, that the KRS states it as at-large for general elections. So none of the residents of Hopkinsville knew this, and it became an issue when whatever candidate ran. So an at-large general election is held where registered voters living in the city elect a candidate from each ward to serve as that ward's city council members. In this ordinance, a candidate's political identifier would not be listed on the ballot. Why? Because I'm going for nonpartisan. So in Oak Grove, we choose six people. I don't know if they're, I don't know if they're Democrat. I don't know if they're Republican. I don't even know if they live on the same street. I just know I choose my people. So in wards' elections, only registered voters living in a ward can vote for candidates in that ward during a primary. But then any registered voter may participate in the general election and may vote for any candidate on the ballot. So ward whatever thinks that only their people are voting when technically anybody around the city can. Why is it an issue? Candidates will have to work hard to touch all voters and not just their ward. Transparency requires that Hopkinsville voters must know that in the general election, they're voting for all of the wards.
Thank you, ma'am. Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Lynch. I live at 3642 Steeplechase Lane. My focus has always been on the voters. Over many years, I've had the opportunity to register students to vote and to inform them of the reasons why voting is important. Several months ago, Alvia and I started this journey looking for answers. We wanted to know why our voter turnout in Hopkinsville continues to be embarrassingly low statewide. Well, based on Hopkinsville's city ordinance, if you register as an independent or other, you can't vote in this local city election. But did you know that there are 6,837 folks in Hopkinsville registered as independents? In the last election, election, in the last general election, only 1,732 independents voted. I've heard stories of the independents that come to vote on primary day to find out that they can't vote based on your city ordinance. They become disenfranchised, they're deprived of the right to vote. Do you think these independent voters will vote in the general election? No, slim chance that they're going to come back. According to a story in the Kentucky New Era in July, Secretary of State Adams announced that Kentucky voter registration as independents or un- under other political affiliation account for two-thirds of net new registrations in June. Based on that trend, independent voters are usually between the ages of 18 and 49. Not sure how many of y'all fall within that age range, but I bet you have friends and family members that are registered as independents. So one idea to increase voter turnout out in Hopkinsville is to give our registered voters the opportunity to vote. Amend the current city ordinance, remove the party labels, eliminate the partisan local elections. In Kentucky, there are 415 cities that now have nonpartisan elections for mayor and city council. Alvia and I traveled to Madisonville to speak with their city clerk. In 2021, they changed their city ordinance to nonpartisan. The clerk stated that the change went smoothly. Currently, there are four cities that elect, four cities that elect city officials under the partisan system. You have Wingo, Graves County, population 578. As Kendrick Lamar says, "They not like us." The next city is Irvine, Esthale County, population 2,237. "They not like us." The next city, Shively, which is a suburb of Louisville, population 15,264, "They not like us." And then you have us, Hopkinsville, population of 30,572. Most cities in Kentucky have switched nonpartisan elections to reduce influence of national politics. Removing party labels can improve representation, increase voter participation, and nonpartisan elections are less expensive. Nonpartisan elections in Hopkinsville might cause more candidates to run, especially those folks who don't want to be involved in party politics but have the vision, qualifications, and merits to live in our city. Amend the ordinance. Folks that work and pay taxes have the right to participate in the process of voting on issues that directly impact their lives.
Ms. Bonnie.
Remove the labels on the ballots. Hopkinsville needs those 6,837 voters. And we have a sample draft of the ordinance for you. Thank you very much. I'm done now. But we're going to pass out this sample draft for you guys. Thank you.
My name's Diane Cronny Turner, and I live at 26 Harden Place. I am here because I've given you two flowers on your desk. First of all, we're having, Virginia Street Baptist Church is having a free clothing giveaway this Saturday from 10 to 1 o'clock at our AR Lastly Fellowship Hall. It's open to the community. Anybody who needs clothing, blankets, we do have some furniture. Come on out, bring your truck. It's for anybody, if you know somebody in need. The second thing I'm going for is Focus 21st Century Minority Leadership Program and Penderal RC&amp;D. We're having a public forum on the boat, What You Need to Know, on Monday, November 3rd, at six, from 6 to 8, at the Pioneer Memorial Complex. We will have refreshments at 5:15. We will also be introducing our 2526 class, Focus Now class, which is grades six through eight. And we asked you to come out to support this event at the Pioneer Memorial Complex on that night. And you have flyers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Alright, floor's open. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name's Brandon Garnett, uh, from the 4520 Old Edwards Mill Road in Hopkinsville. Uh, passed around to you there, coming around to you some information and, and, uh, want to, uh, say that information comes from a committee of people that was appointed. I don't know if the council actually voted to appoint the committee, but I think maybe they, they did vote, and the mayor appointed the committee to, uh, study the net profit tax, which I think most of you all are very well informed about. And so I want to establish with you that that, that information you're looking at, uh, comes from that committee. Um, basically, I want to ensure that the, the council is properly informed. I know at the Committee of the Whole recently, this came up, and, uh, I'm under the impression that the information given to the, to you all at the Committee of the Whole is not all of the information that you need to see. Um, also, on the first page of that, and I'll go through it in a minute, is a recommendation that that committee made, which was what they were tasked to do. And there should be minutes reflecting, uh, what, what the committee's recommendation was. Um, also understand that a lot of you sitting here today weren't part of the council that took the cap off of the city license tax. And so, um, not blaming that on you, but asking you to, uh, consider, um, some of the facts. On the first page, there's, uh, it's labeled one, two, and three, and this is what the committee established, and you can see there, I won't go through all of those, uh, item by item, but, uh, if you lowered it to 1%, you can see that there'd be a shortfall of $213,000 to make the bond payment on the new fire station. Um, option two, which was the recommendation of that committee, uh, to lower the rate to 1.10, uh, shows that the revenue generated, uh, would make the bond payment, and there would be an excess of $10,000. And I want to point out to you that the numbers that you're looking at on this are only generated from the businesses that are paying over $10,000 in, in city business license. This is not, does not include businesses that are not paying $10,000 or more. Only the ones that are paying that. Um, and then number three would show what it, what it does to, uh, lower it to 1.3, which makes the bond payment and then puts another $722,000 excess into the Economic Development Fund, which I, I'm curious to know what that money's going for. Uh, page two, since I only have 18 seconds left, if you'll look down that first line, it shows in 21, 22, 23, and 24, how much money you took in in business license tax. And you'll see that in 24, when the cap was removed, that you projected to take in $4,500,000, and you took in $5,107,000, which was a $2,500,000 increase.
Thank you, sir.
Evening, council. I'm here as Jerry Gillum, 2570 Edwards Mill Road. I've got to study politics and, uh, policy, and I noticed, uh, recently, to use a comparison, you see these tariffs that President Trump has put on these other countries. And what's happened is a lot of these companies are now moving their businesses back into the US to avoid that tariff. What's going to be created here is the opposite effect. You're going to see businesses locate elsewhere to avoid this type, this type of, uh, tax. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'd like to yield the rest of my time back to Mr. Garnett.
Back to the second page, and, uh, thank you, Judge Gillum. Um, on the increase, uh, if you'll notice, from 20, from 22 and 24, and the cap was removed, a $2,502,000 increase in business license fees that were collected. And, uh, my question would be, does anybody think that that's reasonable to impose a $2.5 million increase on businesses in this community? Uh, and that's what happened. Um, Judge Gillum made a point about, uh, businesses locating here, and I'm curious, uh, if you all are aware that a lot of the businesses that are paying this tax can make a few legal accounting mechanism changes and not pay anything to operate in this city. And I don't think that that's conducive for business, and I don't think that's good for you. I don't think it's good for me, and I don't think it's good for the community. Um, you all have heard from me and others before, uh, regardless. You all have heard from me and others before regarding this. I don't think that, as a council, you've been given all the information, and you've been given correct information. And at the end of the day, I would ask that you take the information from the committee that was appointed, who worked very hard for probably a year, and consider the recommendation that they have made to the city council that will lower the tax rate to the business and pay the bonds on the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Floor's open. Good evening.
Good evening. Kate Russell, Avenue, as well as 102 and 106 East Fifth Streets. I'm going to bend your ear again about the, oh, yeah, because I'm short, sorry. I'm going to bend your ear again about the Blue Street Printing Building. I know that that is on the agenda tonight, and I don't know if you've seen the engineering report. I mean, I haven't. But I wanted to bring to your attention, I submitted a Kentucky Historic Preservation Tax Credit Certification application to Councilman Martin a few weeks ago in hopes that you might consider it as part of any sort of economic incentive to allow a private citizen to buy the building and rehabilitate it. I understand that it needs the city's signature on it. So, I was just hoping that, in hopes of trying to save this building, you might look at all the options available. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Floor's still open. All righty. Seeing none, we'll move into item 7, Mayor's Comments. We went to Atlanta for the ICSC Retail Convention, and we made a lot of good contacts there, me and Carter with Economic Foundation went with us. And we had a lot of good contacts there, reached out to a lot of people. A lot of people reached out to us. And we've been very busy with that the last five or six days now, since we've been back with emailing everyone and talking about properties and open spots in the city on that. So, that's where we were last week. And now, this Friday night, Hop Town County game. I hope everybody comes out. Sorry, Vance, Hop Town's going to win. I know. I know. I know who it is. I know where you play ball, too. All righty, but no, I would like for everyone to come out to the Hop Town County game on Friday night, on 10/24. Come out and enjoy the game. It's the last one we're going to have on that rivalry. So, if you please come out to that. We also have on Saturday night, the Chili Cook, Saturday afternoon, the Chili Cook Off in Entertainment District downtown. And we also, on Saturday night, we have the Rotary Roast and Toast out at Casey Jones. So, I'd like for you, if you've got time to come out to that Saturday night. Toby and everyone at Parks and Recs, the half marathon, thank you. Amy and Neil, the visitors' inroom on Goblin Con. We had a great time there. And I'd also like to take this moment to, excuse me, for the Trail of Tears Park, in loving memory of Ms. Christina Scott, a longtime overseer of that park. She passed away, and she took very good care of our park and our cabins out there. And I'd like to remember her and her family on that. And also, it is City Government Month here in October. KLC's put that out to us. And I'd also like to recognize Councilman Bell. He received the Level 3 Master City Governance Award from the KLC Board. Why, we were up there at that. Thank you, Councilman Bell, for all you do. Thank you. All righty. Now, we will move into reports from Officers Committee and Guest Speakers. Item A will be Blue Street Printers, Mr. Kelly and Steve Futral. Come on down.
Good evening. Let me bring up this report. So, as y'all know, we brought in Mr. Gardner and his company to do, give us a structural engineer report on this building to help us make good decisions so that we made sure that we made an informed decision based off life safety issues. So, Mr. Gardner will go through his report for us and then answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me. Now, must be too tough for it. Sorry. Don't know how much time you've had to read this. It's pretty short and brief. Basically, I'll jump to the executive summary right there. Based on observations, I met with the fire department on October 2nd, and we did a full interior and exterior review. Even was able to use their ladder truck to get views of the roof, which was really, really helpful. Key points, the roof's in bad shape, the walls are not great, and the slab's in bad shape. That's really my report in a nutshell, not to oversimplify. But I'll read the executive summary just so everybody can get that part. Based on field observations, the structure located at 116 East 9th Street in Hopkinsville exhibits significant deterioration, and is not safe for occupancy in its current condition. Without remediation and repairs, the building poses potential risk of failure due to loss of order, displaced brick, compromised floor slabs, roof framing damage, and parapet damage. Until stabilization or demolition is completed, the property should remain secured and unoccupied. And that's my main point. It's not safe for occupancy right now. It should remain closed and unoccupied until a decision is made what to do with it. Some highlights on the second page. Start at the top and work your way down. As I said, the roof's in bad shape. And the worst part really are the three parapets on the front, west and south sides. And then there's photos in the back that I'll go to. A lot of cracked and damaged flashing, which means you're getting a lot of water in the building, which is causing the wall damage and slab damage, which is what's holding up your roof system. Exterior walls, they do have quite a bit of issue with old mortar, poor mortar. And then the slab in several places, it's settled, cracked, and dislocated. Bottom there, my recommended actions. First, stick, as I stated, restrict the public access immediately and do so until something's done with the building. Second, you need to evaluate the feasibility of rehabilitation or stabilization versus demolition. You've got two options, fix it or tear it down. I'm not here to sway one way or the other. I'm just saying you do have two options. If you do decide to rehabilitate, you need to do a comprehensive structural review. Because what we did on the second was all visual, onsite for probably 30 minutes. The big area we would really need to look at would be in the roof structure. And as most of you know, that's an old theater, so you've got a drop ceiling, which the photographs will show, there's quite a bit of water damage. But then you have a high ceiling way up above, so we can't see the rafters from inside. But from the top side, we can see the roof, what we call scalloping, sagging, if you will. So, we know there's issues. But until you tear into the, through the plaster and then look at the rafters, you can't determine just how bad the roof damage is. So, you've got to assess that and figure out just how bad is the roof? And then you would need to rework the parapets, as I stated, they're in really bad shape. Last page, you would need to tuck point the entire perimeter, because those are solid low-bearing brick walls. The mortar in a lot of places has gone to dust, like a lot of these old buildings typically do. And then the last point would be, you have to dress the slab, probably pressure jack, to level it and stabilize that. And then, if demolition's preferred, you want to do that in controlled removal, excuse me, removal following city ordinances and oversight. I'll go through a few of the pictures, starting on page 4. So, this is looking at your front, front of the building, way up high. You probably can't see this a lot of times from the street because of the lower canopy. But that's what it looks like on the front right corner, with brick missing and the parapet itself. And there's another photo later of the coping. It's really, really damaged. This is the right side of the building from the parking lot. There's the rear and the left side or the west side in the report. And wanted to point out there, that's, obviously, we all know what used to stand right next to this building. But that's where the floor joists and roof joists of the old Phoenix Building were tied into this wall of the Blue Street. What we don't know is how unstable is this wall because of the Phoenix Building being gone? That's a big question. I note that in the report. That's another thing would need to be looked at in more detail. Try to get a little bit better picture here. I want to focus in. This is the right front corner of the parapet, so the main, the street is down below. What you're looking at is probably the worst spot in the entire roof. The roofing is supposed to go all the way up and over the top of the wall, the parapet wall. It's come apart, and that's the area of the inside where there's most water damage, is the right front. This is the left front, and that black line, if you can't really tell, that's a hole in the flashing, again, allowing moisture to come down. Both of those photos are on the west side. Another one on the west side. Then this one is a photo, photo 12, the back right parapet, so the one nearest us. Again, same kind of deal where the roofing material is cracked or deteriorated, and you're getting moisture in the walls and causing long-term damage. You can see this from the street portion of the front left corner, brick missing. Another view of the front. And there's another topside view of that front right, looking down. The metal coping, I'm assuming that was some storm damage, the way it looks, the way it's all ripped up. But it's been that way for quite some time. Roof hatch where the roof is cracked and allowing moisture in. This is, looking at the main side of the roof from facing the building beyond the right. May be hard to see, but this is what I'm talking about with the roof sagging. You can see the line of the shingles where they're separating. And that's telling me that's where the main, the way this structure is done, it's a main rafter. And on either side, you've got joists in there that are doing this. Again, without seeing directly, tearing into it, I don't know exactly what's, how bad it is, but it's bad enough to see it from about 50 feet away above. A few interior photos, there's that drop ceiling. And all that is missing is due to water, water leaks. Looking at the front wall, don't worry about the debris, that's not an issue, but water stains on the drop ceiling. This is one of the photos of the slab, really at the front door, separating and deteriorating, cracking. This is in the opposite back corner of the building, so it'd be the back left in the restroom. Slab is settled, pulled away from the wall. And then this is on the west wall. What you see there is actually mortar that's fallen through down underneath the plaster on the wall. And slab settled some, and that debris is all where, again, the moisture's coming down and slowly washing away the glue that's holding the brick together. And last photo, just another view of the separation of slab. So, that's it in a nutshell. Any questions?
Any questions? Joe?
Oh, after looking at the pictures, in your professional opinion, we don't currently have a barrier up at the sidewalk, do we?
No, sir.
Based on some of the pictures, I would question if we shouldn't do that, and if so, how far out? Because it seems like to me, with the bricks, and especially on the one end, there was a, you know, it looks like a, well, you'd have to go back to pictures, but it looks like it's leaning quite a bit.
Yes, the tall parapet is leaning in some spots, yes.
And I've seen walls leaning that fail. So, what should we do to be sure that someone doesn't get hurt?
In an abundance of caution, you should barricade. The rule of thumb is whatever height the building is, you go one and a half times that distance. But that's not practical in this case, because that would mean you'd close the entire Main Street. I call it Main Street. I forget what street it is, but.
Ninth.
You would have to close Ninth Street, and I don't see that happening for many reasons. So, at least the sidewalk.
So, that's your recommendation?
I would do everything you can to keep the public safe.
On both, on the side?
On the parking lot side and the sidewalk side.
Okay. There you go.
Yes, sir. Travis?
Did you do the visual inspection of the L&amp;N Depot as well?
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, is that foundation here, is it worse than the L&amp;N Depot?
They're different. And I failed to mention that, this was a slab on grade.
Yeah.
The L&amp;N is essentially a crawl space.
Yeah.
Totally different, both in bad shape, my frankly.
Yeah, so we were told the L&amp;N wasn't even really sitting on a foundation.
It's on cedar piers and post.
Yes. It was sitting on rock and cedar.
Yeah, every time a train went by, it rattled, so that building was. So, my opinion here, we have a blueprint of how to save buildings in this town. We did a good job saving the L&amp;N Depot. That's going to be a staple of downtown Hopkinsville now. So, I would, just my opinion, I want to see us sell that building to a private investor, put the restrictions like we did the Depot, and try to save that building. Again, my opinion, the citizens of this city, they don't have an appetite to tear down another 100-year-old building. Like, it's just not going to happen. And I think we've torn down enough. Like, it's tough to watch those buildings go down. That's our history going down. So, there is a way to save that building, in my opinion. We've got a blueprint. That's what we need to use going forward.
Well, any other comments from the council for Kelly? Thank you. Steve?
I got another one. So, again, the community parking is an issue downtown. So, you know, it's been told, been heard, been said, whatever, if it's true or not, that that intention is to put, make that a parking lot out there. Some, most don't know, but that license branch across the street is moving. So, it's moving to a better location, more parking. So, I think the parking situation in this corner right here is going to be helped here pretty soon.
Well, on that comment, we are going to put it out as an RFP for what goes down here in this corner. We're going to ask the community what they want to see, what they'd like to see. I do not really want to see a green space. I don't want to see a parking lot. I'd like to see a downstairs corner right there, downstairs businesses, second and third floor, be residential or business offices up there, not just a green space or a parking lot on that corner. But that will be put out, and who wants, would like to bid on that whole corner. But we do have to look at this very closely. And council will be looking at this on what we need to be doing with this. You know, roughly going to say on teardown, we're waiting on them to come back with a price on the asbestos part of it, because that floor is asbestos in that floor and in the ceiling. We're going to have to see what the cost of the asbestos removal is going to be. And that's the reason we don't have a demolition price. So, everybody knows everything on that. So, but I was out of town last week. I, me and Doug did not discuss this paperwork till yesterday and today. That's the reason you haven't received it. And now, everyone has a copy of it in front of them to take it home and read it. And then we'll bring it back up and have to decide which way we're going to go. Steve, let's go ahead and block the sidewalks off, you and Chad, and get that done. And we'll move forward from that on this Blue Street building. Thank you. Yes, sir.
So, when we get to the point where it has to be voted on to be torn down, we have that say, is that correct? It has to be deemed.
Well, you've got, somebody's got to pray for it.
It has to be deemed surplus.
It has to be done, deemed surplus.
So, we have to deem it surplus before there's any kind of demolition?
Correct.
So, we have the final say. Okay.
Right. I don't have the say in this. You do. Y'all, as council members, have the say in the money and how we go forward with this. Yes, Ms. Ray?
On this building, have, this is just asking a question. Have we had any outside parties interested in this building?
There's some in the room tonight.
Well, there's some in the room tonight. Travis has been talking to them, and that's something we'll have to look at and discuss.
Okay.
Because he's been trying to, he's been actively trying to sell it, too.
I'm not trying to sell it. I'm just trying to save it.
Mayor, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm kind of, the point Councilman Martin made kind of makes sense to me. It's no secret, I don't go one way or the other with old stuff. I'm get rid of it, keep it, whatever.
Right.
But it does make sense if you all, I think it's before me with the L&amp;N Depot.
Yes, sir.
I do think that's a neutral decision. Is there any hurry that we have to do it now? Could we not put that up for sale, if you will, now?
But once we have.
Why we carry on the process?
Since we have this report, we'll have to see what Doug has to say about it and go over it again. But as far as that goes, we can sell it, just like the L&amp;N. I was more happy to sell it than tear it down. Just like the Phoenix Building, I would rather Mr. Cravens didn't work with us to have someone buy it, because we had investors here to buy it, but he didn't want to sell it to them. You know, on the Holland Opera House, it was immediate teardown. You step in two foot, fall straight six feet. And then I gotta go looking for someone. The fire department does or the, or the police department does, or if the building's on fire, the police department's got to go in and start searching, risking in a burning building. This building is not in that case, but Kelly says we have to secure it and make sure that nobody goes in or out of it on that. But if someone is willing to pay for it, I'm all willing to sell it.
Okay. So that, that, that option's out there.
Oh, that option's there. I don't
Yeah. And I just want to say that that building has been in this condition for, where'd your engineer go?
Long time.
Been a long time, you know.
So to pretend this is a nine one one right now really isn't, it, it needs to be addressed. It needs safety measures put in place. We all agree with that. But to say, oh my God, right now, really not the case. I've been in that building many a times. It's like I was underneath the L and M depot looking for people.
Right.
So I just want to make sure.
There's been several buildings that we've had that, that we've torn down immediately that we called and had within 24 hours. As y'all know, we've had underground. Those are those buildings. With this building, the day we got the report, we condemned the building. We locked it up. We secured it. No entry. And that's, that's where we're at and that's where why we came tonight.
If anyone wants to buy it, I'll be happy to sell it because that means I don't have to be out $60 or a hundred thousand to tear something down. But I will say this. If Mr. Cravens and him would have worked with us and other investors, the Phoenix would still be standing. And I'd love to see the Phoenix still standing on that corner. But he would not work with us, just like the L and N depot. Mr. Brown and him will work with us. He's doing a lot of work up there. And he's still doing continuous work and he's got a lot more to invest in it. If we can find someone that wants to invest in this building, we'll be more than willing to let them invest in downtown Hopkinsville.
One more question. Why your engineers, Steve, might can answer this to one of y'all. So when the decision was made to tear down the Phoenix building, because that wall is what concerned me more than the rest of the building, honestly. It's because it did have something at one time helping hold it in place. The, the rafters from the building that was torn down.
Correct.
At any time, was that part of an engineering review when we tore that Phoenix down of what effect it had on the remaining building? Like, should this have been something that we should have been talking about when that happened? Because I feel like that's the most vulnerable part of that building. Now that's really the only change in decades.
Well, the, the water infiltration, it, it, I should have prefaced, it's deceiving. If, if you have gone inside and, and looked at it closely. I was surprised at the damage. Cause I was in the, the blue streak when we were reviewing the Phoenix. And it, we couldn't determine whether it was a common wall or two separate walls at the time. Cause you, you couldn't tear into one or the other. And that's why in this report, I just questioned, that needs to be looked at to see if it is more stable or more unstable at this point. Again, our, our review is, I don't want to say just blah, but night, the cursory, just to see, we were looking for imminent danger, which we didn't find.
Thank you.
When we tore the Phoenix down, could we have done some of this damage to this building? The, the brick facade?
Didn't tear the Phoenix down. Mr. Cravens tore it down.
I understand the question. Did the demo of that building damage this one?
Yes, sir.
Does not look like it.
Okay.
No, this is more aging and lack of maintenance for better, better.
Okay. Any other questions for Kelly? Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Steve. But on this building, if we can get some, someone that wants to buy it, I am not in favor of owning it. I can tell you right now, we can survey it off.
How do we start that process? Cause I, there's
We will, we will be talking to Doug about that and getting that took care of.
There's going to have to be some recommendation brought back to council with a plan. It would have to be declared surplus and then put out for an RFP. And then come back to council to determine what proposal would be acceptable. There's a lot of different options now. One concern that I would have is what violations do we have? After seeing the report of the basic property maintenance code that the city enforces against other buildings that are owned by others. So we need to get compliant and protect the safety of, of citizens. I think that's the most immediate thing. And then we can look at the options. Be glad to bring those back.
In, in the meantime, since, sorry. In the meantime, since we have all of that, that has to go on. I mean, why, I, I feel like that would be a great time to put the feelers out and list it for sale, see what interests are there. I mean, could we have that information?
We can't just sell property without declaring it surplus and putting it
But either way, it has to be declared surplus.
Right. We have to bring it back to you as surplus and let y'all vote on it.
That go through committee, the whole or?
It comes to council.
Comes to council.
Yes.
Can it come to? October, November?
It were in October. Let us get the rest of I will look at it and see when I can put it on my, on, on the budget, on the books. Any other comments about the building? Okay. All righty. We'll move right on along on this and we'll move into Carter, the West Kentucky Economic.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to give them just a moment to pull up the presentation. Appreciate everybody's attention tonight and the chance to come before you as we try to do for every six months or so, we want to be able to come back and give you. Y'all seen it? Pretty good.
Yeah.
Try to come every six months or so and provide you with an update. And this is one that actually over the last several months, I've had a chance to sit down with some of you and provide some of this information. Been providing public presentations as well. And so none of the information tonight is, is sensitive or confidential in the way that I would have requested to be in closed session. Although if you would like that type of report and update, certainly I'd be happy to come back and do that with you in a closed session as well. And also want to acknowledge before I forget that go kernels, just since the mayor said.
I knew that was coming.
I hope I have more than three minutes, but I'm going to move pretty quickly here because I'm respecting your agendas pretty long and you've already been here for a little bit. But just as a reminder, since 2020, you've helped to create and announce 2,700 new jobs, which results in a hundred and $10 million in new payroll, roughly $2 million in new payroll tax revenue annually throughout the region. And over $2.5 billion in capital investment. And again, I said that in that way specifically that you've helped to create that opportunity because anytime we have success in economic development, it's because of a team effort. It, it doesn't happen any other way. So you need to know that we certainly celebrate that type of information with you. And that being said, I wanted to provide a couple of quick project updates. And I figure what better way than to rip the Band-Aid off early? So let's get to ascend elements right away. And really all I can tell you is I know nothing more than what was recently reported by the company as a response to the grant being pulled by the DOE. And if you saw their president issued a company statement that came out about 24 hours after the grant was announced as officially pulled. And recommitting to the investment at Commerce Park two, what they refer to as their Apex one facility. And recommitting to becoming fully operational and creating the job that they've promised you that they would create. They're currently at about 20 positions there. That's down from around 50 as they started the year, because you remember that layoff that took place. And they do continue to intend to ramp back up in 2027. About $600 million has currently been invested. And when it's all said and done, they still plan to invest nearly a billion dollars. And I did have a chance a couple of weeks ago to go out and meet with their local operations manager, Mark Fern. I spoke with him on the phone today. And again, he just simply reconfirmed the things that have come from the president and CEO of the company. Until we hear something different than that, that's what we're going to certainly move forward with. And we're to do everything we can to help them be successful and to get operational with whatever limited influence we have in helping them. And I know we all agree with that, that ultimately we want them to succeed because their success means jobs and opportunities for small businesses. And that's certainly important in the grand scheme of things. I do want to acknowledge that over $80 million of additional investment has been made at Commerce Park two as a result of the Ascend Element investment. So if you haven't been out there lately, you will see a lot of the roads and the rail and the substation infrastructure and all of that wonderful infrastructure that's needed to have an industrial park is in place. And so that's certainly been a positive for the community at large. And to remind you that your city attorney and others, as you went through this process with this company, you do have some protections in the hopefully unfortunate situation. I say hopefully it would be unfortunate if this company does not make it to production. There are some protections in place that we call clawback provisions that will allow you some ability, hopefully to, to secure what you invested in this through an incentive package. But that's what it looked like about a year ago when it was fully under construction. And I wanted to share that picture because it certainly our hopes that within the next six months or so, the company will get their construction going again, and we'll see lots of construction workers back out there on the site, helping to get that plant to operation. Toyota Bushuku is a great news story. In fact, they're going to have their grand opening on December the ninth. You see that here in the bottom bullet point. But they've currently employed about a hundred people on their way to 130 this year, ultimately to just under 160 is the commitment they made when they went through the process. They committed to a $225 million investment. It's my understanding that it's going to be about 250 million total is what they will have invested. They're about 95 plus percent complete. What they're really doing now is all internal and it's testing the machinery and the equipment as they strive to be operational in December. Again, with that grand opening on December the ninth, they are a 12th Japanese company. And certainly continuing to strengthen our Japanese cluster of industries throughout southwestern Kentucky. And that's what the facility currently looks like. It is a beautiful facility. And you are all invited to that grand opening on December the ninth. You'll get a, a special invitation here very soon from the company. But you are all certainly invited and appreciate your support of that project. We wish they were all as easy and straightforward as Toyota Bushuku has been. It has been a fun one to work. Good company. Kitchen food company, of course, you know, that project well, the first Australian company to choose to locate in southwestern Kentucky. This is one of those projects that's also been very fun to work. If you drive by the spec building, as we all refer to it, at 620 Frank Yo's Lane, you don't necessarily see a lot of external work because most everything is happening inside the facility. But they are full speed ahead as they are building out. We've actually had multiple correspondences with the company over the past few weeks. And one of the things in particular that I wanted to highlight is they had a recent call with the commissioner of agriculture, Jonathan Chell, specifically to talk about how they could make sure that they're going to have procurement opportunities for local and regional suppliers of produce and the different types of meats that they put inside of their ready-made meals. And we are talking about several thousands to hundreds of thousands of tons of, of requirement here. So a lot of opportunity will be for regional produce suppliers and farmers throughout about a 200 mile radius. We're certain of that. We're also working with the company here. We don't have a date yet, but as soon as we get it set, we'll be announcing it. To have a business to business opportunity where they can, where local businesses that want to network and understand how to do business with kitchen food company from an ongoing operational perspective. Will have that opportunity to build those relationships with key kitchen food company leaders. So they are fully committed to not only being built out, but to being incredible corporate partners, making sure that their investment has maximum impact on our region. And so wanted you to know that a lot of fun to work with them as well. And once they get fully going and operational, they'll be building out eventually to that 900 plus jobs in year one, their commitment is 350, as you guys might remember. And of course that's their future home and it's, it's looking much different on the inside. Still looks pretty much the same on the outside. A Novellas, although it's not here in Christian county, I did want to acknowledge it as well. When we talk about our regional economy, oftentimes when we're in front of a local government body, we only talk about projects that are specific to them. But I think it's important to acknowledge that projects like Novellas have an impact across the three county region. And so we do a spot check periodically of where workers live for those industries that are in our three county service area. And in Todd county at Novellas, for instance, when you have a company that locates in Todd county, around 15 to 20% of its workforce is going to be Christian county based. So 300 plus jobs at Novellas, you can probably guesstimate 30 to 40 of those are Christian county employees. So that's why I wanted to just acknowledge that. It reverse, it works the other way as well. So 900 employees at kitchen food company, there's probably going to be 10% of those, percent of those are going to be Todd county residents, right? And so it works both ways across the three county region. Although you didn't have to put up an incentive package to get Novellas to do the first project nor the expansion. It has had a reasonable impact on your economy and certainly throughout the three county region. When they're fully staffed, they're at $15 million, fully payroll and wonderfully led organization there at Novellas. That's what it looked like before operation. It's actually completely operational now. And again, I want to just point that $750 million investment out and just want you to think about the impact that has on the community of Guthrie. It's about four times the amount of total assessed value pre their investment total. So it's transformative in the impact it's having on our neighbors. Sinus fertilizer, I want to be very transparent about that. That is the Swedish company that hopefully will co-locate with the send elements. It is completely predicated on a send elements moving towards operational and getting the type of volumes created in their process that they're going to then use and sell to sinus. They'll take a byproduct from a send elements. So this is a company that we continue to interact with. They have a continued option on the piece of land that they would, that they're interested in. But that's why I assess pending contract discussions. They're going to keep working those contract discussions with the send. And they're not going to commit to that site until they know that a send is back to construction, be moving towards operation. So we're going to work with them. We want to be here to, to be flexible with their needs. But as soon as that option were to expire on that land, we will certainly begin marketing that specific site again and try to find a different company for that site. But we're hopeful for sinus fertilizer, but, but again, it's really connected to ascend elements. And we don't want to be anything less than transparent about that. And then Bucce's, I, I don't know if you guys have heard that it's coming to South Christian county, but, but we're told it is. And, and, and we keep hearing about groundbreaking and we'll hopefully see it here by the end of this year, early next year. I know Mayor Oliver is working diligently with the company, as is her public works director and others. Judge Gillum, who was here earlier, has been instrumental in that project as well. But it's coming. There's no doubt about that. I had a chance to visit a Bucce's recently on my way to the ICSC conference in Atlanta, down in Calhoun, Georgia. And we're going to have one of those and I want you to see 25,000 cars per day on average. So what will happen to South Christian county and exit 89 has the potential to be transformative. It will lead to additional opportunity and it will have ripple effect for the city of Hopkinsville as well, because I think it'll have some positive impact on exit 86 as well. And so good news for the region, 200 plus jobs and $80 million investment. And I took a picture of the wages outside the Calhoun, Georgia, because you've probably heard about those, but they have these signs right outside. When you walk in, they're so proud of their wages, they put them right out front by the big bucky that people stop and take pictures beside. And these wages are incredible wages. They'll be incredible opportunities. So we are excited. It is not simply a service station or gas station, or what people might refer to it as. The best I could describe it is like a Walmart on the interstate for cars to stop in. It's just got so much inside of it and will provide an incredible opportunity for our region. So some other activity and mayor mentioned this earlier, we had a chance to go to Atlanta and then Tony Prim had a chance to go to Las Vegas back in the spring with the city and others. Want to tip my hat to Mayor Knight and Mayor Cotton from Madisonville for their leadership in the Kentucky Connection Initiative, which is a group of Kentucky cities that are partnering together to promote retail development throughout the state of Kentucky, but especially throughout this region of Kentucky. And their efforts are working. We had a chance, as I mentioned last week, and we had several developers that had reached out, had been contacted, have contacted us, have visited recently, plan to come visit soon. And so there are certainly interest in the world of retail development, but, but I don't want to be disingenuous about it. It's really going to be about traffic counts and residential population growth and per capita income numbers. And so there's interest and we're going to do everything we can to make sure that interest manifests into projects along with the city and others. But we need to keep pushing residential development. And that's why it's the second point on this list of other activity. We know there's good development ongoing. Tom Britton mentioned not too long ago to me that there's several hundred units either planned or on the way. Most of those being multi-family. And so certainly we want to see continued multi-family development, but, but ultimately especially single family development. So as we talk about these large project announcements, we have more opportunity for more of the future workforce to live where they work. That's critically important and that will drive the retail development as well. We are working several active projects in Christian county, specifically at Commerce Park two. Again, I can't give you detailed information in public session, but I'll be happy to come back and give you some information in closed session. Nothing that's to the point of warranting me coming to you yet in closed session, but I'll be happy to do that if that's what you would be interested in at some point in the not too distant future. But Commerce Park two is the singular best park in western Kentucky, if not all of Kentucky. It's a rail surf site. It's just a matter of time. We will continue to have interest in that site. We will bring you projects back that you will be asked to support and hopefully we'll bring you the right projects back that you're able to excitedly support and help make new opportunities happen. So bottom line, as you look over the next few months, we, we remain cautiously optimistic about what we're seeing. And we had seen some softening of activity over the past few months. When I say softening of activity, that's new project leads coming in. That's picking back up a little bit, I think, as we're seeing a little more certainty in the national economy. We see a little more certainty from projects that are reaching back out. So we're cautiously optimistic, but, but I don't want to be misleading. I, I think we'd all be blindly optimistic if we didn't put that word cautious in front of it. We need to see some of these projects keep pushing forward and we need to see our national economy continue to stabilize itself and become predictable because predictability is what large companies and investors prefer the most of. So I'm going to move through these quick because I value your time and many of you have seen these either in public presentation or when I had a chance to meet with you one-on-one. This is just simply a quick glance at revenue measures that you guys have at your disposal. And as measured by you, we've just simply put them in charts showing you the last four or five years through 2024, because 25 numbers aren't complete yet. But you can see continued improvement in your annual equivalent payroll. That's the total amount of payroll paid by your employers in the city of Hopkinsville. So that's helped to create a significant amount of new revenue for the city. And that's something we should all be excited about because that's how you keep investing in your quality of life and your police, your fire protection and infrastructure and other items. This is where I'd be cautiously optimistic. I think you're seeing some leveling currently of your payroll numbers. I don't think you should be surprised by that. You had three law I don't think you should be surprised by that. You had three large construction jobs happening simultaneously in the community that had no choice but to create a spike in your tax revenue. So when the school system, Ascend Elements and Toyota Bushuku were all constructing at exactly the same time, you were in a peak spike scenario. You'll see some leveling of that over the next few months to year, if I'm thinking correctly. But hopefully you'll have new project activity that'll start new construction opportunities, and that will help create some more additional opportunity there. And you'll have many of the jobs that have been announced that have yet to come onto the market, start coming onto the market, especially at places like Ascend Elements, and that should help to boost your payroll numbers as well. So cautiously optimistic. This is your total investment in millions in the city of Hopkinsville and new commercial investments over the last 13 years. Simply you can see the trend, and you can see the last couple of years have been significantly higher on average. Large construction projects will do that. Your tourism receipts have been steadily increasing. I believe this year was another record year. That was reported by Ms. Amy Rogers. And again, that's a lot of good work. We're talking about festivals, chili cook-off coming up, summer salute. All of these add to it. Large construction projects do as well, as many of the subcontractors and contractors who aren't from this region find places to stay. Oftentimes, that's extended stays in hotels, so they also help to generate some of this positive news. I also share with you just city of Cadiz. You'll see some positive growth there. Trigg tourism receipts have been positive. City of Elkins looked positive. City of Guthrie has looked substantially positive. That's the Novellas effect. Your real property value trend has been positive within the region. That's allowed many of our local governments to lower your tax rate. I believe you have this past year. Christian County has this past year. When you have increased value as a result of large investments and large projects, that does allow you often to lower your rate, and that's a good thing for everybody involved, because we all pay lower taxes if we have lower rates. Now, if you had higher assessed value, that's a different scenario. I know you guys don't control. You probably get complaints about it sometimes, but that's a different issue. We're talking about the actual tax rate, and kudos to you for being able to lower it recently. So this is Christian County's value. It mirrors the regional trend. This is Christian County's real property rate. You can see the precipitous decline for property taxpayers in the county. Todd County's, I don't show you Todd County's rate. It simply hasn't changed, so it's a really boring slide. It's a straight line, and it just doesn't make much sense. So they just haven't lowered or increased the rate. Trigg County's value, Trigg County's rate. Point simply being, if you will help continue to push strong economic growth, it allows you also to help control and even at times lower your effective property tax rate, which is a win for all taxpayers. So what's next? We've set three big goals for 2030. Create 2,500 new jobs, create over $3 billion in new investment, and secure $20 million of grant money that helps to support our local partners and regional partners in product and site development. These are the clusters that we maintain focus on: automotive, agriculture, advanced manufacturing, defense and aerospace, logistics and distribution, and chemicals. Through our strategic analysis, these are the ones we're most likely to succeed in, and the top three are there for a reason, because they're the top three that we have the best chance of success. Automotive, agriculture, advanced manufacturing. These strategies are strategies we continue to employ. We certainly appreciate the continued partnership of the city. I won't go into depth about each one of these, but if you'd like more information about any of these strategies from our marketing, which we really focus heavily on digital marketing, to our attendance at conferences and trade shows to try to help in lead generation, to the efforts in business retention and expansion and talent development, which is really what Tony Prim spends an inordinate amount of his time doing, and he does it really well. So thanks, high schoolers going in for tours of industries, connecting to Fort Campbell families, getting them better connected to opportunities. That's what we try to do. And then in site development, that's working with partners just like you and others to make sure we have industrial land and development that is suitable for quick success, so we can help deliver project victories for you, which create jobs and capital investment. We get asked this consistently, what about retail tourism and residential? In retail, we want to be a good strategic partner. I, I hope that we're proving that in the efforts that we have underway with the city and other partners throughout the three-county region. We'll do anything we can to showcase and sell this community to any type of project that wants to come into it. And we recognize that constituents often see retail projects as the type of projects that meaningfully improve their quality of life. So we recognize how valuable that is to you and the constituents, and so we'll continue to be good partners in that effort. We'll work with our regional tourism efforts. We do have tourism commissions. They do great work, and so we'll support their efforts. And then ultimately, we want to be your partners when we can be to help you continue to grow your residential population and improve your quality of life. And so that's why we are happy to support the different type of projects that you have underway. We're excited to celebrate something like the Rotary Park on Pardue Lane. Thank you guys and Rotary Club for your leadership in making that park happen. It's going to be a tremendous asset for the community. I think it's a wonderful idea. So we celebrate those with you because they help improve quality of life, which makes us more attractive to the future workforce, which is a win for all of us. So if we are able to help get 2,500 new jobs at roughly $22 an hour average entry level, which is what we project, project the entry level wages to be over the next five years, and they may even go higher than that. At 2,080 hours is a full-time. That'll mean another $114 million in equivalent payroll in the community. And so you can do the math on your 1.95%. That generates a pretty significant number of new opportunity. And certainly, we hope to be able to do that with you. We're ready to win in Christian County at Commerce Park Two. This is the recent photos of it. We do have some good activity on it currently, so knock on wood, we'll be able to bring home some victories in the not-too-distant future. We're ready to win in Trigg County with another 100,000-square-foot spec building that is getting good interest, and we think it's just a matter of time before we get the right client there. And we're ready to win in Todd County with the Johnny Walton Business Park and the Warren Rail Site, which those are two both really good sites that we continue to invest in and try to move along the continuum of development. These are some of our supporters. You're certainly, certainly included as one of our key strategic partners, and we thank you for your continued investment in the three-county region that we're honored to serve. Because of your continued commitment, Christian County has 45 companies that are in manufacturing or industries, representing 8,000-plus employees and over $400 million of estimated payroll just in those 45 companies. If you look at it from the three-county perspective, it grows just a little bit more to 75, $10,000-plus and $550 million of annual equivalent payroll. This, this is big business for you. It means significant impact on your revenue and on your ability to make the right decisions for your constituents. And that's why every year we try to take time to thank our existing industries at the annual industry appreciation luncheon. You are certainly invited to attend on October the 29th at 11:30 a.m. at the Bruce. I believe you guys have some seats. If the city's seats are out and you want to come, see me, call me, text me, we'll make sure you have a seat. That won't be the issue. We want you there to help celebrate these industries and the tremendous impact and opportunities that they continue to create in our three-county region. With that, any questions?
Any questions for Carter? No questions for Carter?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Carter. All righty. Item C, Annual Board of Ethics Report. I'll turn that over to Ms. Byron.
So this year, our Board of Ethics met June 18th, 2025, and October 14th, 2025. There were no complaints received. We had one advisory opinion that was issued by the board on June 18th. For our financial interest statements, the board reviewed the list of individuals required to file a financial interest statement and determined the list was complete, and they also reviewed financial interest statements filed and found no deficiencies.
Okay. Any question for Ms. Byron on the ethics report? Okay, seeing none, we move into the monthly financial report. Ms. Melissa Clayton.
All right. It's my pleasure tonight to bring you guys the September financial statement. We'll start the financial statement as we always do with our inter-fund transfers. We had a total of four inter-fund transfers for the month of September. The total amount of those was $16,915. Makes our total year-to-date 22,915, leaving the remaining balance at 77,085. We'll head right into our revenues. As you guys can see in the monthly financial report, and I, that we are down in revenues. We have a decrease for the quarter of 2.12%, and annualized over this year, we're expecting right at a $988,000 deficit from what we budgeted. You can also see that last year we collected about $120,000 more than what we've collected so far this year. Our insurance premium tax is our one bright spot. It is showing an increase over last year's of 11.33%. Our business license tax is also down. This year, a decrease in revenue over what we had last year by 10.57%. So our general fund, our fund balance, we started the year with 348,328. So far year-to-date, we've collected $11,947,377, and we have spent $14,308,704, which leaves us with more expenses than we have revenue for the year of $2,012,999. When we compare that, and since this is, a lot of you guys, is your first September, September is always our worst month. It's, it is right before we hit property tax season, and it always looks the worst. So comparing where we were this time last year with where we are this time this year, we are about $320,000 more of a deficit than we had last year, but it's still very comparable with where we were this time last year. I'm more worried that the payroll tax is down than I am about the fund balance at this point in the year. Our municipal road aid, we have $37,200 in encumbrances to start with. We've collected only $140,210, and we've spent $1,192,586. So again, in our municipal road aid, we have more expenses than we have revenue by $1,015,374. Our capital fund is also negative at this point in the year. We started the year with $316,000 in encumbrances, and we've collected, we did the first quarter transfer that we normally do in September, so we've transferred $1,191,823. But we have spent $1,813,906. So again, we have more expense than we have revenue across all three of our budgeted funds. Like I said, September's our worst month, but it's not looking good right now. So our budgets at three months of the year, we should be at 25%. So you guys can see where all of the admin departments are. Our public safety is running right along budgeted amounts, with the exception of EMS is a little bit more than what we've budgeted by 29.12. And then our public works departments are all looking really, really good right now. Parks and Rec is normally over at this point in the year because they do a lot of their activities in the summer, and so then they'll even out later on in the year. Overall, our total expenses, we've spent 24.67% of what we budgeted in the general fund. We've spent 70.98% of what we budgeted in the MRA fund, and we have spent almost 40% in the capital fund of what was budgeted. So we'll look at our cash fund balance. We started the year at $18,269,128. Plus our year-to-date receipts, minus our year-to-date expenses, gives our cash balance September 30 of $15,907,800. After we take out our encumbrances, we have a total available cash of $15,825. We take that number, we subtract our two reserve, reserve accounts, and that gives our unassigned cash fund balance $14,490,627, which is 31.12% of our adjusted operating budget. And we do have in municipal order that recommends we keep that adjusted unassigned cash at, at 20%, but it's recommended to be 25. So we're getting really close to, to our ordinance there. When we compare that to this time last year, last year we were at 27.45% unassigned compared to our 31.12% of unassigned cash. And then the last thing I have to report on is our investment with the KLC investment pool. Our cash balance September 30th was $1,225,888, and we have an unrealized gain of $84,040, which made our market value on September 30. This was, was $1,302,152. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about September's finances.
Travis?
What do we start that KLC account with? The initial deposit? Do you remember?
No, it was right around 1.2 million, but I don't remember the exact numbers.
You're close, right?
I think that's close.
Yeah.
Any more questions for Ms. Clayton? Y'all see the numbers? And it's things that we got to look at.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. All righty. Item nine, approval minutes for September 16th, 2025 regular meeting. Motion? Second. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All righty, that moves on. Approval of September 18th special call meeting on that. Any motion? Motion second by Brittany. Any discussion on? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving right on. Item 10, ordinances. Ordinance 28-2025, Deepwood Drive Speed Limit Reduction, first reading.
Reduce speed limit on Deepwood Drive. Whereas the Public Works Department is recommended reducing the speed limit on Deepwood Drive, and whereas on September 18th, 2025, the Committee of the Whole afforded the proposed amendment to City Council, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1 pursuant to KRS 189.390, Hopkinsville City Council hereby reduces the speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour on Deepwood Drive. Signing shall be erected in compliance with the manual on uniform traffic control devices for streets and highways, 11th edition. Section 2, if any section subsections and its clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Motion. Motion by Don, sent by Travis. Any discussion? All righty. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Giroud?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner? Councilmember Meek? Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
All righty. Ordinance 29-2025, Chapter 53 Sewer and Water Service Rates and User Fees, Wholesale Water Rates, first reading.
An ordinance amending a certain section of Chapter 53 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances pertaining to sewer and water rates, service rates and user fees. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, Section 53.35(c) of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is amended to read as follows. 53.35 monthly water rates (c). Wholesale water rates, the wholesale water rates for water supplied for resale shall be as follows. Rate per 1,000 gallons, Phase 1 effective 10/1/25 $3.07. Phase 2 effective 10/1/26 $3.53. Phase 3 effective 10/1/27 $3.98. Section 2, if any section subsections and its clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
All righty, any motion?
A motion.
Got Don, got Seth. Any discussion? Okay, call the clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Giroud?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner? Councilmember Meek? Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Okay. Item 11, municipal order. Municipal Order 42-2025, Kia Assist Agreement Sewer Rehab.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the Hopkinsville Water Environment Authority to submit a loan application to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, KIA, for HWA, SRF Phase 9, Priority 3 Sewer Rehabilitation Project, identifies, identified as WRIS Project SX2104-7031, Kia Loan Number A26-0033S, in the amount of $7,44,050, which also includes $1,627,671 in loan forgiveness. HWA is approved to submit and execute the necessary documents in some more support of the loan application, including documents required to secure a grant KYW-WATER. of the loan application, including documents required to secure a grant KYWATERS or other eligible grant funding program and/or bonding in an amount not to exceed $1,455,950 for a total funding request of $8,500,000 as identified as WRS Project SX 2104-7031. If said Kia loan application and grant and/or bonding is approved, necessary documents associated with the loan and the grant and/or bond will be brought back to the City Council for approval.
All right. Move. Second.
A motion by Chuck, second by Mr. Marsh. All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Passes. All right, Municipal Order 43-2025, Rabbit's Nest Incentive Extension.
Whereas on December 7, 2021, Hopkinsville City Council approved Municipal Order 47-2021, authorizing a downtown development incentive for the Rabbit's Nest LLC. And whereas on October 18, 2022, Hopkinsville City Council approved Municipal Order 49-2022, authorizing the deadline be extended to December 7, 2024. And whereas on November 6, 2024, Hopkinsville City Council approved Municipal Order 35-2024, authorizing the deadline be extended to December 31, 2025. And whereas the Rabbit's Nest LLC has requested a third extension of the deadline to allow for the completion of restoration at 601 South Main Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the deadline of Municipal Order 35-2024 be extended to June 30, 2026.
Motion. Motion, second.
Second.
Clayton. All righty, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank him for that. He keeps working very hard on that building. Municipal Order 44-2025, the Phoenix Property Group Incentive Extension.
Whereas on October 17, 2023, Hopkinsville City Council approved Municipal Order 45-2023, authorizing a grant agreement in the amount of $150,000 between the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky and Phoenix Property Group of WKY LLC. And whereas on November 7, 2025, Hopkinsville City Council approved Municipal Order 48-2023, authorizing a downtown development incentive for Phoenix Property Group of WKY LLC. And whereas, Phoenix Property Group of WKY LLC has requested a deadline of Municipal Orders 45-2023 and 48-2023 be extended one year to allow for the completion of restoration at 1,002 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes a deadline of Municipal Orders 45-2023 and 48-2023 be extended for one year.
Motion.
Yeah, hold up, the date's wrong. November 7, 2025 is not here yet.
It hasn't been quite here.
Are you saying that that's?
Yeah, I think, oh, sorry, I see, I see what you're saying. It should be November 7, 2023.
I do good to know what I'm doing tomorrow.
I can say that's wrong data.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, yeah.
Doug, should I reread it?
No, just, the motion needs to be as amended.
Motion as amended.
Motion as amended, got a second?
Second.
Okay. Clayton, all right. Any discussion on this one? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Item D, the Municipal Order 45-2025, Inter-City Res Funding Reprogramming.
Upon recommendation from the legacy Hopkinsville Committee, Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the following reprogramming of funds within the intercity residential enterprise zone budget. Amount $30,000 from the mayor's 24/7 Downtown Initiative Downtown Incentive Programs to Neighborhood Network Program Coordinator, $30,000 total.
Second. Motion, second. All right. Any more discussion on this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Municipal Order 46-2025, Surplus Property.
Whereas the attached list of vehicles and furniture were purchased for use by the Hopkinsville Police Department, and whereas said items are in need of repair exceeding current value and/or of no value to the city in delivering public services. Now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council hereby declares the items on the attached list surplus property and authorizes the mayor to dispose of said items by methods available in KRS 82.083.
Motion.
Motion.
Clayton and Don. All righty, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, we're moving right along. Executive Order. Executive Order 46-2025, Western Hill Municipal Order Golf Course.
Effective immediately, Kenneth Grabara shall be appointed to the Western Hills Municipal Golf Course Board to fill the unexpired term of Councilmember Vance Smith, and there is no action necessary. And this term shall expire December 31, 2026. Sorry.
All righty. Item.
Yes. Just a question, a real question on that. I know this isn't tonight, but the Western Hills, the city-county on that?
Yes.
Correct. Just asking, I'm not saying we do it. I'm asking a question. Yes. Is that something that could eventually be put into a budget line for the city? I know this is, that golf course is a topic year after year after year, and needing improvements